I'm not going to call in order yet. The recording's on. Counsel, I'd like to ask a moment before we start and pray, I'd like to ask everyone to have stuck to rise. I want to tell Councilwoman Irwin is that you're coming at a time for us. You've been out and seated, but our way is another way of our traditions. And at this time, I'd like you to come up, stand here, and I'd like the second chair to give you a gift from us. Our people, when they were coming out of Kansas, had come through so much that they had an identification with this blanket. And if you'll step over here, we'd like to present this to you. Now, I want you to stand with us or hold it or sit down in my chair after you put it on. I'm going to ask Brother to pray, but I'll have some other requests, not only for us, but we have many Osage children on that track today across the country. They're there because of their work ethic, they're there because of the, they do the best they can. And I want to also say that that's what we want. At this time, I'd like to tell our councilwoman, welcome back.
Thank you.
We wanted to give you a gift, and of course, we'll get it imported for you however you'd like it, but we wanted in here. And then I'd like to ask my brother, Councilman Redcorn, to pray for us.
Okay.
I'll walk you down.
On the track field today, doing all these things to live their lives and be competitive, bring a good heart, we ask that you bless them. Bless our new councilwoman, her home, her land. The land over there at Gray Horse and those areas over there at Big Bend. We ask that you watch over us as we make decisions to take care of these things. We ask that you watch over Keystone, (speaking in Osage). The council, the minerals council, established in 1906 by agreement between us, the Osage and the United States. (speaking in Osage). They decided these documents into being. (speaking in Osage). It's all these things I ask in your name. Amen.
I appreciate that. Thank you. We're going to talk. Road call, please.
(inaudible).
I'm glad you're there. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. I've been on three governments. The first one was all elders. I wanted to recognize that position of this blanket with this prayer. Our peoples were so much to that gift of that prayer, of that blanket. It's at our churches, it's at our dances, and it's at our services. With that, I'd like to call in order, we're going to go through this agenda pretty quick. I've been told that a couple of items. Number four, Mr. Batson will be able to make it. I haven't confirmed five C yet. And we're going to take our executive, and then we're going to talk to Mr. Wilson in his room with that.
I believe Carl Prosser's here for five C.
To represent on that? Perfect. That'll work out for us with that. The meeting, I'd like to ask that we have a road call.
Councilman Big Horse?
He will be, not today, he'll be absent.
Councilman Tishlawan?
Red.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Here.
Councilman Redcorn?
Here.
Second Chairman Eagle?
Here.
Councilman Rebar?
Present.
Councilman Jackefer?
Here.
Chairman Waller?
Here.
We have four.
Thank you, Counsel. With that, we'd like to go in. We were unable to have a treasurer update by Treasurer Batson. They did bring some information to us today, which I'd like to read to the council and executive at that time. Of course, we'll begin with our attorney. The next item up for the floor is the number five, the business of Osage Nation Department of Natural Resources Class One well. I'd like to introduce a young man that I've worked with quite a few years here, and I appreciate him being here, Mr. Walker. This is Craig Walker with our Department of Natural Resources. Sir, if you'll just come and take care of this.
Yes, sir.
It's good to have you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the words, Chairman Wallace. Thank you, Minerals Council, for having me today. We wanted to, obligated to give you information that we've collected with working with EPA over numerous years now. We have an underground injection control program that started in 1984 in collaboration with Minerals Council and EPA, and we have been a direct implementation program since then and currently. We have federally credentialed inspectors through the EPA, so they have an inspector federal credential, more or less license, to inspect all injection wells in Osage County and Osage Nation reservation. With that being said, in 2020, the EPA passed an issue, been approving from a request of the Governor of Oklahoma, to expand per the SAFE, Accountable Flexibility Efficiency Transportation Equity Act of 2005. So they have amended and approved this, that the state would have an expanded role along Indian country. One of those things that falls underneath that is Class One wells. And so, we wanted to come forward and let you know that we have capacity to inspect those wells, but per EPA, and with that approval, it will be delegated to the state at the time. That Safety Act of approval from 2020 is under review, and there is a meeting coming up on the 15th and 16th for comments and questions in regards. The Pawnee Nation has brought up a lawsuit against them or a class action as far as, what's the word I'm looking for?
The direct.
A challenge, a challenge of the decision. Pardon, sorry about that.
Would be important a lot.
And so, we are, we are going to be sitting in on those meetings as well, providing comments in regard specifically to Class One wells. Safety recognized Class One, Two, Three, Four, and Five. They excluded Two specifically for the Osage Reservation, but the state did try to assume authority on all the rest of them. So, I wanted to make sure that Minerals Council is well aware of this. We are trying to do our due diligence, and we would love to coordinate, cooperate to have a unified front against this.
Thank you. I would like to make the first call then. The effort that you just talked about, we are not wanting as a council to have the state of Oklahoma interject anything over the Osage Nation.
Yes, sir.
Your Department of Natural Resources, we'd like to support you in stopping this effort and also cognifying that any time that the nation has to have this issue done on these projects, they always have to come to the front of the council. And the tribal council, they'd have to have a resolution to be allowed to do that project. So with your venue, you can demand it. If we have to, we'll go to Congress and write to legislation to take care of that. But at this time, we are not in support of anything that they would do over any project, not only permitting EPA, UIC, whatever the case may be. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the council, Councilman.
Thank you, Chairman. And it's nice to meet you, Craig. The 15th and the 16th, is that May, May 15th or 16th?
Yes, sir. That is May 15th, 16th of this month.
And what do you say you all plan to be there, is that the Osage Nation, your department, representing the Osage Nation?
Yes, our department is part of representing the environmental interest and protection of natural resources. We will be representing and gathering and getting comments.
Will you be, have legal representation there as well?
Yes, we have informed the Osage Nation Attorney General's Office, and they will have representation on the conference as well.
You know, which attorney will be present? Will it be the Attorney General or someone else?
I believe it's going to be the Attorney General, but I can't guarantee that depending on what the schedule looks like.
Is this a public meeting? Is it open to the public?
I believe it's open to all tribes.
Just to the tribes, not to the public?
I believe this one's open to all the tribes.
And will it be a listing session, or is it, or is it just a?
It should be an update on their review of the 2020 approval. My understanding is back in 2020, when they approved that expansion of capacity for the state, they did not consult or meet with any tribes at all. And so, they have looked at reviewing and possibly doing this and amending this approval.
Is the, so there's already litigation filed?
Yes.
On Pawnee Nation?
Yes.
I don't know if that's where the terminology at, tribe or nation. The, have they asked us, or are we considering, we, the Osage Nation, considering joining the Pawnee in their litigation or filing our own?
I'm, I'm not aware on what the overall game plan is as far as joining with Pawnee Nation. I believe their particular case is involved with different aspects, it's not specifically with Class One wells. But I can get back with you on that and follow through, and this with our Attorney General's Office.
Okay, so there's already some pending, we already, we have one Class One well in Osage County that used to, that was permitted through the EPA.
Yes, sir.
Using a easement that was granted from the Osage Tribal Council a decade ago that's still in force and effect. They've reported monthly, I think, maybe even more frequently to the EPA, monitoring and other analysis, water analysis and things of that nature. Have they started reporting now to the state?
Yes, sir.
Do they, do they report to both the EPA and the state at this time, or just the state?
My understanding is EPA delegated that to the state, and the state is inspecting and reporting to the EPA.
So does EPA still have to have a blanket authority over this whole process? And they just farmed out, or like you say, delegated the function to the state?
I believe so. I believe that's how, way that Safety and ruling is also with now new ones. So, permitting is going through the state now as well.
Okay, so that's a good question. So, or, oh wait, I'd like to ask, before the Safe Tea Act, and that's S-A-F-E-T-E-A, right?
It is S-A-F-E-T-E-A. Yes, that's correct.
So, Safe Tea, like the drinking tea act, and the, the, the law or act or addition to it, maybe amendment that you referred to, that delegated it to the state, that was the Inhofe Rider?
No.
No?
No. So, Safety Inhofe Rider was, was back in 2005, so that was part, part of the original bill of that Transportation Act. In 2020, was the Governor extending all state EPA-approved environmental regulatory programs in certain areas of Osage country within the state. And I can provide a, I can provide the Region Six letter if you guys would like.
Okay. So, if there is a permit issued today, or somebody, we, we actually have a interested party that wants to apply for the Class One well?
Yes, sir.
Within mineral, or mineral state now?
Yes, sir.
Would they, what's the sequence of events? Would they go to you first, then the EPA, then the EPA would delegate it to the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality? What is it, what is the procedure today?
So, today, the procedure would be then going directly to the state.
Just, if I'm asking you and the federal government?
Correct. So, what would happen is, I know which well you're talking about, but they would basically send their permanent applications, everything to the state. They would still come to you, the Minerals Council, for a commencement of access. With the approval of both of those, that's what gets reported to EPA, and they receive and file it in federal documents.
This would be the same as a Class, Class Six well also, is that, is it different?
It is, it is different. So, Class One is a disposal well of hazardous and or non-hazardous materials. Class Six is specifically a CO2 sequestration.
I meant the permitting process.
Permitting process could potentially be some, yes. The EPA, sorry, the state has started their application for Class Six injection wells.
And they would also have to have a lease or an easement from this body prior to approval of one of those wells?
I believe so. I'm not an attorney on that, but in my opinion, in my professional opinion, Minerals Council has done a great job establishing the ownership of core space, even with Class One wells, by requiring an easement. And the way you've turned your easements by a per gallon or per barrel basis of injection, that is more of a storage capacity of, of a core space ownership. So, I still believe they would still have to come through you guys to get that easement.
That's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
Councilman Redcorn, thank you for your patience.
Appreciate your work on the, I guess what you're dealing with, this injection, Class One, and I'm assuming Class Six, which we've been well aware of. I just wanted to inform the council, my understanding is the Pawnee Nation, back in those times, was moving forward what they called at that time Treatment State for their water program to establish, bring those elements of EPA, Region Six, down to the Pawnee tribal level. And they, at that time, I believe they're the only ones that had an application for Treatment State.
That's correct.
Lo and behold, here comes the Inhofe Rider and tried to stop that activity from happening for tribes. So, they call it the Inhofe Rider for a reason, it was tagged on with one of these acts went through them. So, that's kind of what we're dealing with, that mentality. Now, my question is, if we can't, I've got two comments. Number one, if we don't believe the state has the ability to effectively run this program, can we request Region Six to do it instead of either us or the state?
Again, I'm not an attorney, so take it as an opinion, don't take it as legal counsel.
Oh, I'm taking it as.
I, I believe that there is a federal responsibility of trust property that is the intact Mineral State of the Osage Nation. And with that being said, it should be the EPA's obligation to make sure that that, they obliged to their federal responsibility.
Because I heard, I mean, talking with, he sat right here, Randy G, tribal liaison in Region Six doubts.
Yes, sir.
Used to talk kind of what you're saying. However, recently, he's kind of changed his tune, and I understand that authority has been shifted over to the state. So, I'm going to disagree with Randy G, even though I know him well, I went to college with him, you know, I mean, I disagree.
Yes, sir.
So, my thought is, and then the last thing I want to say, but I, if we could push that concept, I'd like to continue to do it, if it's even at all possible. And I believe our attorney is right here. Number three, we've been dealing with the, the biggest earthquake in Oklahoma was right across, not in Osage, was it Pawnee County?
On the county.
And the state of Oklahoma operated.
Yes, sir.
They blessed it through there, and then bam, I was out in the field dove hunting when it happened. I watched, I was like, oh my, it looked like the land was ocean waves coming across in Osage Reservation. But I'm saying, when I say this to the state, I was at Oklahoma Geologist Survey Meetings, all the state, I said, we, Osage's management, well, you guys ducked. And I, when I said that to the state of Kansas, they agreed. They said they have their seismic activity problems bordering the state of Oklahoma. So, I think us and them can tell the same story. We need to monitor and maintain our own injections, working straight with the state. Because if we don't, they're, we're going to get the last priority, they're going to hand it over to someone else. Right now, we call the shots, we're protecting our Osage people, our head ride holders, folks that live out there. I think we've done a really good job since you said 1984, we've had this program.
Yes, sir.
So, I'd like to strengthen what you're doing there. And not the state, but us, your office. Anyway, I, if there's any way we can push those concepts, and I think that's an extreme great example that they just, I don't know what they did, but bam, they had problems. And I went to several meetings and watched the state squabble back and forth on how they were going to handle that problem in Pawnee. And then, as I know, we're geologists here, but we found out that we're, we're injecting fractions of water just inside the Osage. So, you see how we're handling it, the state gave them the go-ahead, bam, volumes and volume of water straight into this area, and we got some big, we got some seismic problem. Anyway.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair.
I'm going to go to the second chair and then finish with Council.
Thank you, Chairman. Great, thank you, thank you for being here. I went to the EPA conference, or we signed it a couple weeks ago, and Senator Tenet was there, and David Conrad was there, I don't know if you don't hear him or not.
Yes, sir.
Governor guy, you know. And I attended all, just one day, but I attended the whole, the whole session until the very end. Randy G and our, our, what's his name?
Height.
Height. Our height was there at the last, very last. And they, they, well, my question here in a minute, but they, they told, they told us at various, various hours during the day, that they want to work with the Osage Nation, that they, they, they want to cooperate with us, they want to coordinate with us. And my question is, how often do you, do you coordinate with the EPA, Region Six, our height, and Randy G? You talked to them quite a bit about, about everything.
Yes, sir. So, we coordinate, in my opinion, very well and work with the EPA on a day-to-day basis. We have multiple programs within our department that are funded through the EPA. UIC is one of them. Since 84, we have been funded through the EPA as a directly implemented program. We recently are the first and only tribe at the moment to now does SPCC, which is Spill, Prevention, Control, and Counterinterest. So, we have.
We're not federal trustee.
Yes. We also have our 106 Water Program, which is monitoring surface waters, not point source pollution on streams and transits within the nation. And then we have our General Systems Program, which is helping us start and develop a solid waste program. So, we have multiple grants that are funded directly through the EPA, and we coordinate with those guys on a day-to-day basis.
I heard on the news this morning, Governor Sted, he retold a bill or agreed with a bill about the offer that goes through Osage County, what's it called?
Vermoostah.
Vermoostah.
Eight of them are.
I can't remember what he said, what exactly he said. Do you remember that?
I, I've got to do a little bit more research on it, I'm aware of it. I'm, I'm wanting to dive a little more into the details and get the next video.
Got any other details?
Thank you, thank you, yes.
The first issue, and then I'll turn it over to the council, is that the federal regulations actually state this Minerals Council is allowed to protect this source of water, as you all know, and that's was one of our cases. With that, Councilman Redcorn.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. I just wanted to know the location and time of the, of this meeting with the.
May 15th and 16th?
Yes.
Yes, it's going to be a Zoom meeting, and I will forward you guys the link with the times and days.
Yes, we'll have it sent to our chief staff, Mr. Reynolds, and then we'll have it dispersed out to our attorneys and our council.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
That's true. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Hey, Craig, nice to meet you. Do you have a prayer on my person? Sorry.
Dead lag, don't worry. I just came up and I see you a week ago. I've got all the ropes.
Hey, Craig, so the council met with EPA, some of the council members referred to it a month or so ago, February, I think it was, to ask them kind of what the status was of their analysis of the Inhofe Rider. And from my, I'll characterize it as saying, they were either sort of in a holding pattern or a black hole, because the, the original decision of the 2020s came out under the Trump administration, no consultation with tribes. The Biden administration pulled that back, but then hadn't quite decided what they were doing yet. Meanwhile, Governor Sted has gotten more aggressive and things. And frankly, the Biden administration is not standing up, in my belief, for tribal responsibilities and trust responsibilities. So, the question I wanted to ask you is, the way EPA described it, in my reading, of the original 2020 agreement between EPA and Governor Sted, which is still in place because EPA hasn't done anything yet, was that, you have to kind of read between the lines, but that lands held in trust were excluded from Governor Sted, state of Oklahoma's reach into Indian country for environmental regulation. Has that topic come up in your discussions with EPA? And I'm not trying to put you aside, I'm just trying to learn.
Sure.
Because they weren't very, they weren't very forthcoming in our meeting in February about this kind of issue, because they seem to be holding their cards close to their chest. I'm trying to learn about it as we get into the meeting on the 15th and 16th that you're talking about.
Correct. So, it's kind of a loaded question, there's multiple answers. So, EPA officials with boots on the ground, and visiting with those people, and the guys that we report to and coordinate with on a day-to-day basis, until that, until it is federally repealed or amended or changed, the 2020 Act is still in effect, as you said. And so, that's how they are currently deferring to the state on specifically the Class One well located in Barnstable. And then with the permitting process is as. I have reached out to higher-ups in the, in the Region Six office, and as you said, they, they do hold their guards close to their vest, and the main answer I get is it's still under review. That's the answer I get, and until the review process is over, which I think that's part of the meetings that we're having on the 15th and 16th, is I'm hoping that they will shed some light on where they are in the review process and what their anticipated results are.
So, what I saw is a carve-out for lands held in trust. Is there, have you heard any discussion about that? Because that is, in my view, an exception for Osage, Mineral State, Nation, Minerals Council. Has anybody talked about that? Have you heard any information on that?
I have not heard any official information, documentation, other than verbals.
Okay.
Which is why I have that strong, strong opinion on minerals state being held in trust as a federal obligation, not state.
Thank you so much. Yes, Council.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to formally ask you, if you would, to try to get an opinion on that, from, from your position.
From my position?
From your position.
Okay.
It's one thing for our Mineral Council to inquire and try to get somebody to give us a response, but I'm, I'm asking you if you would. But I'm, I'm asking you if you would please make that inquiry and see what they tell you.
Yes, sir.
And, and report back to our Chairman.
Yes, sir, I will contact the powers that be over at the EPA and do my best.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you guys, I appreciate your time.
All your staff. With that, counsel, I'd like to go into the next item on the agenda. The EMD grant application for Mississippi limestone, Councilman Red.
Chairman. If you look on here, in front of you, I asked Dayton to get a copy of this. And basically, if you look, I've kind of penciled in the letter, or the numeral one, that's the first slide. And numeral one to the bottom left. What you're looking at, Shane Madsen, he worked for several companies here in the Osage. Was very active at one time, he, we gave him, he presented at the summit several times, was very active. I think he's kind of moved on. But anyway, I got my hands on this report that he gave us for mineral council, and I think it could, Mr. Irwin might have been on when, when they handed this to us. So basically, he's gone through, he's got all the production histories, he's shown where the areas that's really prolific historically has been produced. Showed those leases and where those barrels came from since the, since the initiation of oil production in the Osage Reservation. So I'd like for you, if you could find it, page nine. Of this. Presentation.
Assessment of underground oil natural resources.
And then what he's, he's led this presentation through volumes of barrels that, that, that can be, that's gotten so far. And where he thought, where we not be able to go next. And then he kind of lines out available data for prospectors, and that's kind of the sheet before, it's all included. But I thought that was really nice information. Our geologist Bill Lynn is probably the best person in house that can kind of tell us where we are with all this information. But I wanted to direct you to page nine and ten, and I did bring this up before. The production ability, which I was talking to another councilman. In this report that's in front of you, I sent this to you all about a month ago. And he's saying the Woodford Shale has about four hundred and sixty million barrels of oil. As a mean average, and this is using the science behind their, their, their craft, which is Shane Madsen, Bill Lynn, Dr. Puckett. We've had a lot of interest on the geol- geology side. But that's where I'd like to make a motion that we table this and bring it up on our May fifteenth meeting. At that point, I'd like to just kind of. Get with Shane, get with Dr. Puckett, and just kind of detail exactly where these barrels and what would be the best approach to survey this area. Using these guys and see where, where, where can we make this happen. So that's my motion, Chairman, is to table this resolution to do a DMD grant for the Mississippi limestone survey.
Yes, sir. All living. I have a motion on the floor, I need a second, I have a second, motion on the floor by Councilman Red Corn second, by Councilman Shackelford, discussion please.
Hearing none, call for questions, take.
Councilman Trish Walla.
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Redhorn.
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle.
Yes.
Councilman Rebar.
Yes.
Councilman Shackelford.
Yes.
And Chairman Walla.
Yes.
Motion, Chair.
Motion, Chair, that will be taken to our next agenda items. I'd like to call the, using the Osage gas and generate electricity test findings. Mr. Will Shadlow, would you please join us? And Carl, why don't you all have a seat up here? I hope you got some great news.
Oh, we got some great news.
Glad to have you, sir.
Sit down.
Yes, please. Make some.
We have ran the test and everything has really panned out, but. We don't know what we're at right now, because we had an meeting and we didn't understand. We thought it was, this was a done deal, but the minerals cannot be. So we just like, when we got invited to this meeting, it's like, well, what are we going to talk about? So. We're just going to kind of give up.
Councilman Red Corn, you know what he's, what he.
If I may, I'm going to kind of, where we started and why we're here today.
It'd be nice, yes.
Okay. Okay, Carl Croftser, Will Shadlow. Will Shadlow called me one day and said, we've got this generator in Cleveland, Oklahoma. That's using the produced gas, raw well gas, generating electricity and running this lease. So Bill, I got a call, Bill Lynn, I think Mr. Redd, when we all drove down and just took a pic at. Oh wow, there's some potential here. So I guess that next meeting, we came to the mineral council and we, we discussed with our council. And through rigorous conversation, we decided to pick a location in the Osage. And see if it'll work here. To do that, I guess Mr. Walker's gone, we said, well, what about Bird Creek Farms? Because they got possibly a, some gas infrastructure that we could tie into later. So we said, let's try it there. Carl and Will got with the guy named out of Missouri.
Chuck.
Chuck. And Chuck decided, agreed to bring this apparatus, this generator, set it on this location. And they talked to the current L S C, which is Bob Knapp and Scott Bicharm. And they agreed to do what they needed to do to, to conduct this test. So then we brought it to the council. And one thing we wanted to know was if we pulled gas out of the ground. We needed to handle the volumes and how the shareholders were going to get paid. So we worked out an agreement with the BIA, I'm assuming. If they were okay, if we had a metering apparatus installed. They could record the volumes that they were putting through and pay the shareholders that volume of gas. So all that was agreed to. Bob Knapp put the system on the, his lease just outside of the Huska here. And they took off with the lease, so I'm going to turn it back to Will, this is where we are now. And I think we started there, but they changed locations.
I want to turn it over to Carl.
Okay. I'll just pick up where Mr. Redcorn left off, yes, we took it to site number one. The gas was inadequate there, it was like eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty BTU, the generator would not actually run. Mr. Matt provided another location for us, the BTU there was fifteen hundred. Volume was fifteen MCF. We moved it there, it has the I A meter on there. We metered the gas, it ran perfect, it runs the well. He has four wells on that lease, that generator will almost run those four wells. It'll run three of them for sure, the fourth one is very close. He has enough gas there that you could set another generator and you could run the entire routes. With that. I'd like to, since we got a new council person here. Some of the rules that are coming out about this vending gases, how I kind of got involved in this. This vending gas is, needs to go away. And these producers are going to need a place somewhere to go with it, something to do with it. They can't just close it in, that's going to hamper their production of wells. So they're looking for a home for it, EPA wants it to go away, so. We've kind of come up with this generator that can generate the electric, run the production there. And do away with the vended, you know, the vended methane gas at the well. I came to a meeting here, I asked, how much vended gas do you think is being done in Osage County? I can't get an answer. I'm suspecting there's a lot of it. That vended gas. Could make your, this council, could make you a very large sum of money, if money is of interest.
Is it to you? How dare you ask that question in this council? Is this a joke to you?
A what?
You think we're joking about this position? You say it's funny about money? We represent people and shareholders and they are struggling.
No, I don't think it's funny at all.
No, no, it's good, continue.
I don't think it's funny at all, I don't know why.
It's just like that last meeting we was at here. It seemed like we got treated wrong. So we, you know, like, we come up here, we run the test and we did all this. And it seemed like when we come up to this last meeting, it was like, no, you all, we can't make money for the minerals council. So we can't do nothing about this. So that's why we're kind of like, all set on this, because we was like, we come up here, we brought a whole team up at the meeting. And we was going to give all the research on how much money that minerals council can make. Everything on that deal. But then when we come up here, it was like, no. We can't do nothing unless, it just made us look. It didn't make, it didn't feel good at the meeting. That's what I'm trying to get at, and that's where we're kind of like, you know, I'm putting it, we're putting this on the table for you all.
Yes.
And, because the minerals council, the headright, you know, the headright shares, the gas, the natural gas that's vaping up in there. That nobody's making any money on it. That we can put these machines and it's up to you all, how you all want to run this. And, you know, that you could charge the, the pump jacks and everything. You can, you can service electric to these people and they could be paying you all instead of the city of Huska. City of Homie or whatever, we just want to know what you all want to do.
Second Chair, please. Thank you, Chairman. When, when this first started, I went down with y'all to Cleveland at the time, you know, Bill Lynn was there and Tolly, myself. He thought it was a good opportunity to do something, especially with, I've always been an advocate of natural gas. We also have a grant right now, called a grid, grid resiliency grant. Combined with the Osage Nation, we're working at, we're still in the beginning stage. And it's doing exactly what you all, what you're inclined. It's to use natural gas to power electricity. And it's called a resiliency, and Councilman Redcorn came up with the term to name the grant. And resiliency means to need help, keep, go without help. And the Department of Energy, what is, what is that grant? We had a meeting yesterday and been having a couple of meetings before that, and the money hasn't been established yet, but we're running in the beginning stage. But when that money does come in, we're going to hire an engineer or some kind of professional. To go out and assess the CO two E and whatever formation routes of the inorganic gas. It, it, it really falls in right in line with what y'all are doing. Looking for wells and where all, where all this gas. What brought, what brought this on, if you recall, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, when everything went apart, right? And in the city of Tulsa, an Oklahoma natural gas company practically ran out of gas. And in the state of Texas, they were, they were living in cars trying to keep warm, when they got down, remember sixteen below, twenty below. And everybody was just, it was, it was a tragedy. It was an emergency is what it was. That's what this grant is all about. And that's what brought us to, we, we, we actually applied for the grant over a year ago. Back in twenty, twenty twenty-three. We didn't know if we could get it or not, they all of a sudden, we paired with it, you know. So we paired with the Osage Nation, they're going to take half the money for, for housing and other, other parts of it, even, even this campus. You say we have a blackout, we, we have a generator, we could, we could turn the generators on without electricity, you know. So that's called an emergency, right? And the same thing with our elders over here, the elders in Hominy, the elders in Fairbanks. What happened, we all had a blackout, it gets down to thirty below, you know, in the wintertime. No, no gas, we have our own generator, we have our own gas in Osage County, we have plenty of it. We just got to figure out how to go about it, and that's where we're at right now. And that's where you all came in, when you all came along with the generator, it just fell right in the line. I like to tell the audience that, that's exactly how it happened, where, where it happened and when it happened, and that's where we're at right now. Then how did we get to here where they said that? What happened at this meeting? The one that we just discussed?
Yeah, I mean that.
Yes.
I can answer that, I mean, I can give my thoughts.
Yes, sir, please, go right ahead.
Okay, we agreed in this chamber right here to let them go ahead, and it was a no-cost test to us. They did it all.
Yes.
So you guys took off, did what you're going to do. But you weren't the only ones. We took off too and tried to figure out how we're going to make this work. So I can come back and say. That. My understanding is if you think. The Osage shareholders could make money off of this. And I thought, I'm going to explore that. The answer is, we got to establish an entity to do it. And in this mineral council, not just this project, but others, it's a clear nut. They do not want to establish an entity so we could grab that and make more money. And I, if I didn't make that clear to y'all at the second meeting, I apologize, y'all were just telling us what y'all, what's, what your results were. And then I said, why don't you present it to the full council, because we just, you called us in, so here's where we got, and we gave your own thoughts. But that's where I am. What is clear, what is clear, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is that the BIA said, if you want to pull gas off your lease, an existing lease, you can do it. Just put a meter on there and roll. So we got that established. So now, if you're a current L S C. And you're interested because these natural gas laws are coming out quick, is that right, our attorney? They're coming right out, we're going to be hit hard and our, and, and as Carl Croftser's saying, this is a solution. But our kind of not lining up is, we can't develop an entity so you could come to us so we can invest and make it happen. We're not there as a mineral council. But rest assured, you can do it. Because now we got the BIA saying, you put a meter on there, you. we got the BIA saying, you put a meter on there, you're paying royalty, you can take off with this technology. But unfortunately, we're not gonna be, but we did get that established, I just want y'all to know, that's established now. Now, how you gonna invest in, and all that talk to y'all, but I'm telling, this is how I see this whole process working out, and I appreciate you guys coming in, I still think there's a home for it, but we gotta, you know, we just got us, and I'm not saying it's in the mineral council, I'm saying it might need to go to the producers, which you, you know, there's your home, it might be, but we did do our side. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, chairman.
And then I'd like to go to Councilman Urban.
Okay, so, I think there's a misconception here. For one thing, this technology's been out there for longer than I was born, okay, and I'm not the young, I'm anymore. I've actually had this kind of equipment on properties that I've owned and operated. In particular, I ran a forty horse submersible pump on a lease, I had to buy propane to start with, because until I started producing enough oil and water, it was holding back the gas, so I had to run my propane till I got enough water left in the back, so I'd start making enough gas. It took about seven MCF a day, about half of what you just mentioned, to run four wells, to take over the propane, and I ran that forty horse motor off that, and I did all that because there was no, there was no electric to this area. If there been electric, I would have been buying electric, because of the dependability of it. But misconception I mentioned is in two-two-six point four oh, current oil and gas less seed, in your case, where you had the operator, they had four wells that ran on the electric motors, that had gas, you sent fifteen MCF a day, fifteen hundred BTU, which is pretty high BTU, as you know, better than I do, and it ran for sure three, and you could have maybe possibly run a fourth electric motor. These electric motors, running twenty-four hours a day, those electric bills are about two hundred bucks a month, maybe a hundred and fifty to two hundred per electric motor rate, so it's a substantial expense. But, but that producer has the right to use that gas from those wells without paying any royalty on it at all. So, the, they have the right to use the, the gas off their lease to lift oil, royalty free of the gas. That's already built into your two-two-six point four oh, and, you know, I'm surprised that this hadn't been mentioned before. So, when you said, but, but your, your, your case one, that you mentioned, over at the farm, where I guess you're testing a well that had eight hundred and fifty BTU, and it wasn't sweet enough gas to run the equipment, that was not to lift oil, that was going to maybe provide lighting, or heat, or other electricity for that facility, that's different. But what you're saying, in case number two, it was to run four oil and gas pumping wells. In that instance, there is no royalty generator, you know, due off the back gas. It's, it's a benefit to the headright owners that this happens, so that they could lift this oil, maybe without that, it would be too expensive, and they would shut in the wells. So, and finally, I'll say that, you talk about the vending of gas, this same code of federal regulations also said that no gas shall be vended from anywhere, without the written, without this, without approval of the superintendent. So, no one's allowed to vent gas right now.
That's correct.
And the amount of gas we are talking about is three MCF here, two MCF there, maybe five over here, if it was more than that, they'd collect it and sell it, if there was a market, if you had a pipeline to sell it into. But, so I wanted to point out the volumes that we're talking about is pretty insignificant as well, but, so I just wanted to share that information, but I'm all in favor of, of doing whatever we can do to produce more oil. And we have the gas, it's a shame that our gas can't bring more value than what we get for it, this is one good use for it, but I think this is a process that you might should take each of the independent oil companies, and see if this is something that can be economical for them, like you did this one instance on your case number two, and take it to the oil companies, and not to the mineral owner, we're the mineral owner, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, sir, that's where I thought it was gonna stay. Councilman, would you like to speak for councilmen?
I, I just wanted to clarify something, if I may, gentlemen. You were actually going to do this at farms, there wasn't enough gas, so then you moved over to another lease that Bobby Knapp had, and you're running three of his four wells on this one generator?
Just running one well.
One well, and it's electric?
Yep.
Okay.
Now, we could hook on to that, but they just want to run this task, and we just this one well.
I would like to remind the minerals council, when Robin Phillips, the superintendent was here, she charged these guys, these oil people, she charged them when they flared the wells, and they did all that, gas, she charged them for that. He's saying that they're allowed to use that gas to actually make more oil, and I watched them with a little buggy, I don't know what it is, it's got all kinds of stuff on it, where they go out to each well, and they hook it up so they can flare the gas. I don't know, do y'all have a way to actually accumulate the gas that's being flared?
Accumulate the gas out of well, per well?
Yeah.
Depending on how much gas that well produces. As you already said, some of them only produce a small amount.
Yes.
And I'd like to say one thing, what drove us here was, we were under the understanding, you had a lot of stranded gas in this county, has no home, has no pipeline, has nowhere to go, okay? That's where our machine comes in to play for you. I'm not here to talk about the producers out here in Northern California, we're here addressing this council, what you might be able to do with our machine to benefit you. I don't want to talk about any other producers.
Can I?
And on case one, Mr. Redhorn, that was running a well, it was not running a facility.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and we had a meter on it.
Yes.
To meter the gas, it, you just would, the quality of the gas wouldn't run.
You just happened to be next to the fire.
Right, you just had to be next to it. And, and our, our setup, it has what we call a transfer switch, so if the generator happens to go down, it just transfers right back to the grid, and the well never stops running, it keeps running. And our other thought was, on this, yes, it's being vended, for the council to make money, or whatever avenue you want to pursue, I don't know. I don't know all your ins and outs, okay? That would be somewhere where you could set a generator, you can capture the gas, and you could sell the electric to the producer for the same amount they're paying Indian Electric, or any other co-op. They would eliminate the vending of the gas, I know they're not supposed to be vending, but I think there's vended gas out there, I'll say.
Yes, sir, thank you, Councilman Redcorn.
Thank you. I'd like to address another misconception, and I appreciate you bringing up the regulations there. But during our survey, we found two wells that are not leased, that are producing, we think, some pretty good quality gas, and a lot of volume. And, Mr. Lynn, we went and found your two locations and assessed them. So, let's say we stick one of these guys out there, it's not under lease, so does it fall under that? I'll ask you that question. But let me, let me finish, you can tell me later, but in the meantime, we got it established with the BIA, if we do it, stick a meter on there and roll. So, this is a test, and they understand that this is being a test. So, this is kind of where we are. So, I think before we beat this technology to death with some kind of particulars that may or may not apply in all situations, because there's other growth areas that we're looking at, not just what you're pointing out to in that two-two-six, which I think is a good comment, but we've locked, we've talked on other producers too, how we've got Bob Knapp and these guys, and they presented to us their technology using that gas and lifting that without a conventional pump jack. So, we're looking at that, or they're looking at it, and, I mean, everybody, and Paul, I appreciate you doing this. You come in here because this is a, this is, might be a solution, if they roll out with this methane rule, and it's in the works now. Pretty soon, we're gonna get hit hard, our producers are gonna get hit hard on a certain amount of volume of vending methane, and you're gonna have to pay penalties. So, this is a solution. I worked in research and development in oil fields, I worked on it. I'm telling you, you don't solve all your problems after one test. These guys went out there and tested it, didn't work for a time, tested it again, and we just happened to have a Jolly Roger out there, this guy who said, "I'll pay for all that, whatever you guys need," and agreed to it, because he's interested too. So, we didn't have to spend a dollar on this. So, now they're coming back and saying, "We got a successful test, now what do we do?" So, here we are, I would say, let's keep all our options open, I think there might be a home in this. We could generate gas, we talked to Bob Knapp, they own about ninety percent, by understanding of the pipe gas lines throughout the reservation. And they have agreed to, to charge us ten dollar, or a certain amount for MCF, to load up in one location, dump it off on the next, and they're doing that already in the reservation, they're already doing it with other operators. So, that's an option. Mr. Lynn, he could come in, kind of like what we do with the open well program, get his team together, where they're pushing gas in all these locations, and dumping it out at a location over here, we're generating gas, electricity from gas, and then we're looking at trying to sell. So, I mean, those are all options, I just don't want to kill it as we're sitting here, you know, looking at one test, I think there's a home for this. Thank you, I guess, do we, second chair?
Yes. Thank you, second chair. Okay, so, in the scenario that you mentioned, I would think that royalty would be due on that gas that would be used for that purpose.
Yes.
Correct. The problem is with that, is that you generate electricity with this technology that's been out there for decades, my whole lifetime, so you generate this electricity, where, what are you gonna do with it? Where's it gonna go? So, if it was right there on the lease, and you're gonna use it, the old company, you're gonna use it, well, that's his gas and his right to use for free anyway, so you're talking about taking gas from a lease, making electricity, and selling that electricity to somewhere else, or put it in into the grid and make the grid buy it. So, tell me how that's gonna work, because what we have is, we have Indian Electric, we have PSO under AEP, we have Indian Valley Electric, okay? These are three off the top of my head that we have, not one of those three will touch a little operation like this, if by one bolt, or one hose, or whatever terminology, kilo of electricity from XYZ Oil Company out here in Myhule Lake, okay? So, how are you gonna get that electricity from Myhule Lake over to Cleveland, Indian Electric over at Cleveland, and how are you gonna make them buy it from there? Where's the, where's the market for that electricity? How are you gonna get the electricity from here to over there?
Can I, can I answer?
Without electric poles, generators, transformers, all that.
Can I answer? Because I'm interested in making some money for our headright holders.
Exactly right.
And I'll answer this question, and I appreciate Carl Croftser, who set up a meeting with, or tried to, with Indian Electric, and they're interested in having a conversation, but I said, "Hold off, because you can't represent the nation in going to this discussion." Or the Osage headright holders, we gotta get approval through this council. So, there, just that conversation right there told me that Indian Electric is interested, or would come into a conversation. So, I mean, we've got to get bold, and we got to move and try to get these, these agreements established. When we talked to the city of Pahuska, when these guys dumped it off at Bird Creek Farms, they said, "No, they're not gonna make any kind of an agreement." I said, "You're right, they told us no, but not Indian Electric." So, I think there's room to grow here, but we gotta get aggressive with it. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it. We're gonna move on down to our next agenda item, please.
Other thing. Have you ever, can he show his other, one other thing?
Which is?
One other thing, well, if you do have, if you have approximately two hundred, two hundred MCF of stranded gas, we will buy, we'll set forty machines out here and buy your gas from you, and take it. I don't care where it is, anywhere in Osage County.
So, we're a storage unit. We've got another option here we haven't talked about, but I wanted to look at, not, number one, that's a federal law we're talking about. I sat on the White House Committee writing federal laws with last administration. There is a criteria there, anything that is used to generate electricity, compression, or anything, you have to have a deal under our lease with the superintendent of the Osage Reservation to do that. Now, I don't want to correct everybody in here, but I'm gonna start doing it, and that's the first thing, is that that negotiation has to be with us. Right now, I kind of like the idea of them working with a producer to see if they can get the buyout from the electric company, even a small contract, but I can tell you, twenty-four years ago, I sat in the same chair and had the same conversation I've had today, exactly the same, and I did go under the FERC laws and whatever. You cannot get, force a company to buy your electric, and all they've got to say is, "The grid's full," and they will say it, because why would they want to buy it? They don't make, they don't make anything off of it. But if we can operate it like we're talking about, it's still gonna come down to federal law on how you obligate your gas, whether it's in the boiler, whether it's coming out, and that is a huge item that we need to look at. All I'm saying is that I would like to see if the companies can do that, because we've got some large players in this race that could actually request that, and that's where I think we'll be heading with this later. My compliments to you on your project, I think that the other options are available. I think we're gonna get hung on something, just as the councilman's talking about, you start selling electric off of the gas you pull down there, I believe we're gonna have to talk to my headright owners about how we option that, and that's all, that's where we'll leave it. We're gonna take a short five-minute break, and we'll come right back.
Thank you.
No, no, this was just, we did have a resolution on this.
I didn't sleep last night anyways.
So Fred?
That's pretty cool, feel like I wanna do.
And no matter what we have to do, how we have to set it up, we need to get our right to our dogs. And here's the thing.
Yeah, I just made it, so I was tired of applying.
He said, I'll do this.
What is the?
Uh, they have things for them.
What do they sound like, what do we, I mean?
I'll charge two dollars in four hours.
That's kinda high for transportation fees. Is it that much?
Pushing along, kill here, dump it out over there.
I understand that.
So I'm saying, Bill Lynn and his crew are back on board, start operating leases and start shoving gas in the system and dump it off, I don't care where it's needed, sell it off to Indian Electric, and we get paid on the electric side.
I see that, I see that. Do you still have that big camera down there? Or did they plug it?
I think it's still, well, they plug, it's all plugged.
Is it, can we get into it?
I, I think so, I mean, we'd have to invest, re-drill it, so I'd have to drill it, I think.
But what he's saying, I don't know, and that's what he said, that I probably didn't say what I was talking about. And Robin Phillips was over, she made a. I think she did that to keep him.
US government, not us, to them, that's gonna kill them.
Me?
No, you're actually, I don't quite understand about the plugging. You know, they're using those little.
Oh, I was gonna say.
Those, uh, those little.
And I'm gonna say, forget it, I feel like I need to bring it, I'm just bringing it. I'm gonna say.
Because they're using those little, with those, I think.
Hold your back.
They put their monitors on. Okay, and they're gonna fly those around to ask, to see how much gas is actually coming in. How do they detect the order?
What's that? They're doing this way.
How do they detect in the order? Do we have enough?
It's just. They're doing, they're doing methane scans out there.
Yeah, okay, I understand that, they're using those little. They're using those drums to hear.
As I asked, way out of nowhere, man?
That's right, that's right.
Oh, you know what it is?
Sandwiches and things. It's a great idea, they love stranded gas.
Yeah, that's, that's why we're talking about stranded gas.
Flared our gas, but they can't, they pay for it.
Yeah, that's right.
We had a meter on it, and I had to report everything, and we had to pay.
You know, was I not right when I said the last superintendent made them pay for it?
Yes.
Pay the royalty on it at least.
And then Charles would let them vent it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I said, the point is, they get to vent it, I have to flare it and pay for it. Well, they have stranded gas, I said, what the heck, who's in that house? Cause we've never got a gas line out here to the alcohol wells.
DeSharm said he could collect it, dump it off. And I'm sorry, so let's put a generator somewhere, so that we're liking, get Bill Lynn's group back involved and keep the gas punched in somewhere.
We have a lot of guys have their own J nine that, just to tell them just cut them off, they were all spinning. There was like Bill Lynn and a bunch of them, they're worth forever. Trouble with it is, the reason you're using this generator with that gas is cause you don't have that right, you don't have any access to. Like Paul was talking about.
They stuck it in, yeah, and started selling.
Well, yeah. Oh, yeah, they go in, the little lighter with the little hats that I've got a guy doing.
But I said, don't bring that up.
Oh, listen.
This guy's nuts.
Let me tell you something.
But look, look, if they're, if they're pushing gas to a Bitcoin machine, I pay the royalties on it, I don't give a shit.
That's right, that's right, that's right, yeah. Well, your best of both, no abilities or no responsibility.
It's still all handled by them. And I said, but they so, they did, they shoved some Bitcoin machines. So all that's.
I did taxes for, it's a mom and her son, and then they've got another partner. And it's, uh, it's gas, but it's in Tulsa County. But they mine it.
Weren't there, uh, business plan, like you put in that big building out there, that old carpet mill, Bitcoin or something?
At one time, yes. But it uses an astronomical amount of electric.
There you go, there you go.
Let me tell you.
And, and they just put in, they just put in another, uh, substation out there, they enlarged the substation out there by that big carpet building.
She was going to use in that building as much electric as the entire city of Pahuska.
Yes, yes, yes.
The same equivalent.
But, are you seeing what I'm saying? That's why I was asking, is there a way you can go and accumulate that? I'm, I'm not, I understand the Michael, I understand this and that, but we have stranded gas.
Yeah.
And we need to figure out.
Bill, Bill's team, I feel, through the work of well, I saw it, they can re-function themselves to collect gas, shove it in DeSharm's system.
But how do they transport it over there too?
Well, DeSharm owns eighty, ninety percent.
No, but I, I mean, how are you, are you gonna put it in a container?
No, we're, we're, pipe, you pipe it into his system.
Okay.
And then he goes and dumps it out over here.
Yeah.
We're talking about pipe, we're talking.
They're gonna, no, they're, they already own it. We shove it in, two dollars of MCF.
Okay, but we're, we're talking about the stranded gas here that's.
Yes, all over the county.
Okay.
All over the.
There's a lot of it that's up there, they can't get, they can't even get into the pipeline. And if they can get, if they can, then they shut them down, where they will take it, that's what's up with them. And it wasn't my guys' fault, they would produce it.
And we're doing all the.
And he's right, he shuts your production down. You can't even get that gas, you can't even get that in there, so. It's basically just. Oh, it's a big shot, so it's not, he would've never. I'm like, so they don't give money. Oh, I know, my kids love that I'm hardy.